Discussion is not on Face AI. We're carrying that in number sixteen, discussion running street inside walk construction.
So, so we did have our ADA training today, um, actually Ray sat to mostly yesterday. Today, this morning, we focused on right of ways, uh, first and then transition plans. Second, the transition plan, uh, really reaffirmed what we knew that any city over fifty in population or employee census. Has to complete it, uh, may as well show up in next year's budget. Uh, the morning was well spent, I thought the presenter was from the Federal Highway Association, so another expert opinion for the board to consider. Uh, her position was ADA does not, streets not equal sidewalk directly, there's not a direct correlation. Um, the pro-wag is still, um, proposed, uh, she expected it to be adopted sometime, you know, eventually. Uh, she said that the prior administration, you had to lose two regulations to add a new one, probably slowed it down, but she seemed to suggest it would be coming, so. Um, I kinda tried to break down for the board, I should have brought my notebook where I, where I kinda understood that we were at after the last meeting. I thought there was a consensus on several of the items, um, I understand the last one, we did not reach a consensus. Uh, so the board has to tell us where to go, what to do now.
The second one, we didn't get to either. Where we had, where we had a street with no sidewalks now, the second one is.
That, that was where we do not have the necessary right of way.
Did we decide that if we could get a hundred percent?
Then we would do it.
Participation for everybody?
As long as we had a right of way.
Right.
No, yeah, I mean, they'll have to give the right of way, yes.
So, so number two, Prince is where we have no sidewalks and we have no right of way.
But now, I'd really like to get back to this conversation that, that I started with. Because it wasn't all this sidewalk stuff. The idea was to not do any more sidewalks, so we can do more streets, because streets is what, that's what we need to fix. And whenever you do ADA sidewalks, and if you're gonna do sidewalks, they're gonna be ADA, I understand that. And I said that the last meeting. If we're doing a street that doesn't have sidewalks, I don't think we ought to be doing sidewalks, we need to just do the street. And I've, and I've got one, another thing to ask before we get out of this. So, I've asked this question before, and it's about the engineering drawings. We have a drawing that, that says how that street was to be built with asphalt. Can we, or can we not use those drawings as original with an addendum to them, just changing the substrate?
I would defer to our esteemed engineer.
Because we, it's, it seems to me like we're re-engineering the whole street project. And if we're not gonna build sidewalks, there's no need to do that. And that's just that much more money we can save when, when we redo a street and fix it with, with concrete, you know, take the asphalt out and fix it with concrete. So, Brent, you know, you and I talked a little bit about that, but that's part of the, the cost that I was talking about. We're not figuring that, because we're redoing the street and sidewalk and everything with engineering that I don't think we need to do. I think we can do that with, with an addendum to the original drawing. All of the grades and, and all that, that ought to be on that drawing. And if it's not, we didn't do a very good job the first time. So, somebody needs to answer that question, can we use the original drawing? By just going back in, if we're only gonna do the street? Take the asphalt out and put the concrete back in the test.
Well, okay, yeah, I thought that we had answered this a couple of years ago, you and I talked about it here a couple of years ago. And I believe our response back then was that you can't, because those old drawings don't have the center line established. You know, they were based upon, uh, you know, they, they left the old asphalt in place typically and built new curb lines on each side, and they were independent of each other. So, now to go back in there and put the street in, you, you won't have any way to tell a contractor where to put that center line. So, what we do now is we wanna, we redesign that center line, so that you have a crown of the street, put your drainage, get your drainage where it used to go.
No, wait a minute, you're saying that the drawings we originally used to build that street, curb and guttering with asphalt?
Mm-hmm.
Didn't have a center line and, and you don't have the grades you need on that street?
Right, they were, they were designed, the gutter lines were designed independently to match the driveways. So, there's no, there's no center line established on, on semi-novation.
So, I guess the center line of the street isn't the center line of the street?
We don't, we don't know where it says that which comes?
Well, we're, we're gonna tell a contractor to build it, like how? But you know, it's, it's, location wise, it's the center, from here to here, you can measure to the center. Where do you put it, where do you put the, where do you set your grade for the elevation of the top of that street, the center of that street?
Is the elevation not on those drawings?
No. Well, no, because it was, what they did was they built the curves, and then they overlaid it. They only asked what was there to, to create the, the driving service.
Well, it sounds like we, our engineer didn't know what he was doing.
Well, that was, uh, that was the way they did it back, I don't know, that's the way they did it back then, I mean, it was.
It's costing us a lot of money nowadays. So, if, if we can't do it, I understand, that's, that's fine. I, I didn't hear that answer the last time I asked the question. There, there seems to me that, that there ought to be a different, an easier way to, to fix that problem, I mean. Let's, let's talk about that some other time besides right now. I, I just think there's a better way to do that. So, thanks for listening to my babble.
So, Brett, uh, I thought that, that we have basically limited the cost of engineering for sidewalks to like fifteen percent of a particular project, is that correct?
Depending on the particular project, we've seen a range of about sixteen to twenty-four, twenty percent is what we're saying in general.
Twenty percent.
Yeah.
Well, that's for the cost of sidewalks.
Right.
Which includes the engineering.
Right, that's what he said.
Right.
Okay.
That includes the cost of the sidewalk?
It's not just engineering and inspection, it is the actual concrete itself?
Right.
The sidewalks amount to about twenty percent of what our street projects, I bet, right now, there's a range. But on average, we're seeing about twenty percent of a project's total cost winds up being sidewalk.
I had in my head that it was engineering ten percent and inspection ten percent, so that's.
So, the twenty percent puts into concrete and finishes the, finishes the sidewalks to the ADA standards?
That's all that. In general, yes.
And that's including dirtwork, grass and all that there? No?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's, yeah.
So, if it's.
Well, yeah.
Is, is.
Yes.
Okay. My, my, another question I got is if, here's one curb here, and there's the other one over there. We know what, generally, the center line's gonna be the center of the street. Wouldn't a contractor, he's gonna sit there and shoot this spot right here, shoot the spot over there. And what's usually the pitch on that? Is every street, I mean, according to the ADA thing, is, is there anything with the streets? Is it a two percent, four percent, five percent, ten percent? What is the rise in the middle?
They, they talked about that, that lady did.
Mm-hmm.
If there's an intersection where there's people crossing with a stop sign, it was two percent. And where there's not, it was five percent, is what I remember from our presentation.
That's cross load.
That's what I was.
Oh, I thought that's what you were asking about.
That's, no, he's, he's wondering about the, uh, the grade of the street as, as it may.
Oh, the street, I got you, you're not wrong. You're talking about the crown of the, the crown of the street.
Typical crown, right.
Is it always di- different, but then whenever it's a crosswalk, say there's right through down through here, it's like two percent? And, and, did I follow that right from that lady?
I can tell you, I can tell you on Edgemont, the one we just built, and built this, you know, built sidewalks and everything. It varies from side to side of the street to get, to get the drainage right. Especially when you come into intersections, 'cause then you gotta warp certain streets to, to match. Depending on your through street, like at Saint Joe, or not Saint Joe, but Main, you probably had to warp that street and actually lose the ground of that street to make sure the water drains are crossed.
Okay.
You know, there's, there's, there's a lot of different things.
Well, that's what I'm asking, I mean, at, at your intersections.
You know, I, I can, I can, like, right out here in front of the Sonic Hall, you were saying you just patched something there? I know there, because of the way this, the building is and everything, there's probably a good nine inch crown on one side. Just because that's, you had to have a nine inch crown, that was back when, you know, when we designed it, just to get the water drained out. You get into a lot of different scenarios, you know, I was involved with some of the streets that Prince was talking about. You know, when we designed those streets, we were basically designing the curb and gutter to carry the water. Because it was no, no, was ditches, so we were trying to get rid of the ditches more than anything. So, we're designing the curb and gutter separately from the center of the street to carry the water, and, and like ten percent match, match driveways. Uh, and when you get to an intersection, you know, a lot of times then, we didn't, didn't replace the storm surge at that time, because money was the situation. We had inlets, you know, at the corners of the streets where, now you gotta move those inlets, 'cause you got, you, you need the corners of the streets for your curb ramps. Uh, you know, I know, I know Prince thinks our streets are in bad shape, and that we need to really spend a lot of money on our streets. I could make a good argument that our sidewalks are probably a lot worse than our streets. Just with the simple fact, I know the little lady lives on the corner of Holly and North. She drives, drives her, her wheelchair to church Sunday mornings. I've never seen the lady drive on the sidewalk, she's driving down the middle of the street, or on the side of the street, with a big orange, orange warning sign on the back of her wheelchair, because it, our sidewalks, she can't drive her sidewalks, because she can't get her, she can't maneuver her, her wheelchair up and down the ramps that are there.
That's on Saint Joe.
That's, yeah, you're exactly right. You know, I've been involved in, in some of the projects, even, even when we replaced the gaps on Edgemont. You know, I was on board at the time. Even the gaps that we filled, it didn't, doesn't meet ADA, per se, because we didn't wanna take the extra precautions and spend the extra money to tear out some driveways that, that needed to be tore out to, to, to get it to ADA. Uh, and there are some stipulations where, you know, ADA allows you, based on costs and based on.
I don't think the cost had to, I think most of it was grade and everything else, is that right? I mean, by understanding that lady did that.
That translates to cost.
Right.
You know, I didn't think.
Grade, grade presents a problem in times, but, you know, sometimes, you know, we, you know, we talk about putting sidewalks in where, where, we don't have a sidewalk now. You know, that is the easiest time to put an ADA compliant sidewalk in, when there's no sidewalks there that you have to match. And I think, uh, Ray actually made a comment that, you know, one of the things we could do is when we add new subdivision requirement, well, that is the absolute best time to put them in, because then, then there's no driveways either. And I think we, we more or less said that, that according, according to the way the, the board ruled here a couple of months ago, that we decided we were gonna put sidewalks in the new subdivisions if we had to pay for them ourselves. Or the, the city paying. Uh, what else? You know, like I said, getting back to, uh, Rosella Martin, you know? I've seen her go to town, go to therapy, I've seen her on the streets, and very seldom do you ever see her on a sidewalk. She's going down the street, and I don't know, if she got hit, would we be, if there'd be any liability for the city, because she's not using the sidewalk, I don't know.
That would be hard to say. Why, why doesn't she use the sidewalk?
Because she can't maneuver, she can't maneuver up the, up the ramps.
There's a lot of the, the other people that, that are in wheelchairs maneuver on the sidewalks, I don't know why she can't. She also ran into a guy's truck over at the church.
I don't doubt it.
And left.
I'm just, I'm just saying.
I, I, I feel for these people, but she needs to get off the street, get on the sidewalks, 'cause I don't believe that her wheelchair won't go up the sidewalks. It might be smoother on the street. But you're gonna make me believe that she can't get up and down on the, on curbs or the ramps we got, 'cause the other people.
I, I, Mr. Smalley's about the only one I think I've seen try and negotiate our sidewalks with a, with a wheelchair.
He's about the only one.
Who, who else, who else?
I don't know these people, but I see them, I'm, I'm going down Saint Joe, but they're not in the street, there's one lady is, I didn't know who she was.
So, if I guess, uh, I'm looking at this number one, two, and three. So, number one, as a board, we're, we're all in agreement with that, is that correct?
That was my understanding, Larry, where, where there's a street reconstruction, where sidewalks are there, the board agreed that we need to fill gaps, we need to fix, we need to make that ADA compliant, and everybody agreed at the last meeting.
Did we do that on Grand?
To the full extent, no. We, we changed sidewalks, we tried to save the dollar, we, we changed the sidewalks that were, were in poor repair or missing, we filled them. But there were some sidewalks that the concrete was good, the degree was close, we did not replace.
And were the driveways, we never, we didn't change any driveways.
You're right, we tried to avoid driveways.
So, we're all good with number one, as, as a consensus, is that, is that okay? I mean, we're good with that, right? So, we're moving past number one.
I cannot make, can I make?
Yeah.
One more, but, that, we did not do that completely on Grand Street.
Right.
So, it's different than what we did on Grand Street.
Right. Right.
Okay, but if this board approved the federal regulation go through, then we're probably gonna have to.
Right. And then those places that we skipped will show up in this transition plan as being non-compliant. And eventually we put on schedule where we'll come back and have to fix it.
So, according to number one, if, if we are just doing Grand, by the letter of number one, we would address those driveway issues, sidewalk.
Driveways, sidewalks, the whole.
And that was your whole point, but I, I.
That's how I do, make that point.
Yeah, yeah.
Excuse me.
Yeah, go ahead.
How many streets other than Grand isn't like that? I mean, that, we already went in and tore out and put back. How many other streets in our town is like this, to where?
In the rough numbers curve, we generally talk about twenty percent of our streets are still asphalt.
No, 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 I'm not talking that.
But those are the ones, 'cause that's why we did Grand. So, these asphalt streets will be done next before we ever get to the.
I understand that, but I'm just saying, Grand Street, is there any others? That we went in, tore out the asphalt after we either put our water lines, uh, sewer lines, whatever.
Well, I think, I think the policy on where we've been replacing streets and putting sidewalks only came about about five, six years ago, after the last, the two thousand fifteen survey.
You can pretty well say Saint Joe's the whole, the whole bowl of wax is shot. But I'm, I'm saying, streets within the last five years, ten years, how many, other than Grand, is there any others that you can think of, Dave?
Well, there are a lot of them.
Yeah, we, we've.
There's had ones like that.
We, we've filled gas along Edgemont.
Correct. Okay.
The new part of Edgemont, we made it completely ADA, but on the other side, there were gaps, we just filled in.
Okay.
Gas, we didn't tear out driveways, some of those were, Steve, you remember Mr. Loffy came in and talked to you guys, so, so there's, some of those still exist that aren't compliant.
Well, there's, that one you're talking about, it can't be compliant.
Right, and there's, there's rules that we can document, and then we can get around it, but there's places that it does exist.
Didn't, didn't that lady say that the road runs with the grade of the street, or the sidewalk runs with the grade of the street?
Up and down the hill, yes. We're talking, we're talking.
No, we're talking about, not cross load.
Yeah, it runs with the grade of the street, that ain't, that ain't where, where we're out of complying. You can be out of, that's not being out of complying. Now, you're running with grade of the street, you're not out of complying.
Right.
It's the cross load.
Two percent.
Two percent cross load, every driveway you go across. I think it was just, what, less than two, three years ago, that we required anybody that put in the driveway in to put the sidewalk in the driveway.
Right, we try to do that.
We try to do that now, and we still don't get it all done. We don't get it done all the time, but you, but, well, we got a standard now that we just drew up probably three years ago.
Yeah.
Well, that's, that's why Mo-Dog redid all of those sections of driveway along sixty-one North there. If that sidewalk was part of that driveway, and it was over a two-degree grade, it was torn out by Mo-Dog and done to ADA specifications.
We've, we've really only been adding sidewalks for, like I said, six years, roughly.
Yeah.
And to be honest with you, I'm, I would, I'm confident, more than confident, that Schinler, or Five Mile Drive, all them sidewalks out there are ADA compliant. I'm confident that the lower end of Edgemont, where we just extended Edgemont, I'm confident that's all ADA compliant. Trade Winds, the one we just did.
No, Redbud Court.
Redbud Court, yeah, the ones we just did. You get it on any other street, just drive them, if you, if, I'm telling you, if you see a, a driveway that's, if you can notice it's tilted, it's out of compliance. If, if it doesn't come up to a flat spot and then go up, it's, it's, that driveway's out of compliance.
There's sidewalks on my street that they had to take out when they bring the water main, when they put it back, they put it back ADA compliant, 'cause I mean, some of them are on the slides, you know, but you can see it, it's flat. You know, it's tapered flat and tapered.
So, what we've been trying to do is anytime we get in a ride over now, we try to fix it, so we don't have to do it again later. Fix it when we're gonna do it once and be out of it.
Okay, so number one, with Dave's notation of A, let's make sure we all understand where we're at, we're all cool with number one, right? Okay, we'll move to number two. Street construction and sidewalks do not exist, and the city lacks the necessary right of way.
So, so this became evident on Rob Street, I own that one. We tried to get people to give it to us, and sixty percent did, probably as they were on the opposite side of the street, just how it worked. But what I heard the board say at the last meeting, we tried to go back and watch the video, is where, where that happens, we should not install partial sidewalks, because that's not safe either. And we, if we get it all donated to us, if everybody wants to participate, that's fine, but if they don't, then we shouldn't install sidewalks in those places. And I thought that the board was in agreement on that last meeting, too.
As it says in the bottom line there, we will secure all of the right of way needed for the complete path, otherwise, no sidewalk. Are we all in agreement on that particular situation?
Yep.
Consensus.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So, now we're on to number three.
New construction will be something like we did on Redbud Court, like we did along Sycamore Road, like we did at the end of Edgemont, when we punched that all the way through. We're working with virgin ground, so to speak, when we do it, cheapest time to do it is right at the beginning of the construction, so we're gonna do new subdivisions, new streets with sidewalks.
Consensus?
I agree.
I, I think we missed one on number two.
Okay.
We missed one on number two.
Yeah. If we, if we don't have the right of way, we made a decision. What if we got a big long street that doesn't have any sidewalks now, and we have the right of way?
That, that's.
That's number three.
That's gonna be.
That's the one.
That's number three.
Is?
That's the one.
Undefatable one.
The one below.
Oh, the one below.
That's the one below.
We try to put the ones that we thought we had agreement on at the top together.
Okay, 'cause I, I didn't think we talked about that one, though.
Well, I mean, the, the second, number one, we haven't.
Okay.
So, do we have a consensus on number three?
Well, we, we, we have a consensus on two first.
Oh, you all said yes.
Yeah.
Well, he said something.
Well, I, I, I didn't remember the number one, the second number one was on.
Second number.
Back to tier one.
So, so number three in the first session, we agree that when we do new construction, we want sidewalks installed at that time.
Yes.
I, I, I would agree with that, unless we have to buy a whole bunch of right of way like we did and cost the city a bunch of money, I don't think that's right. Especially whenever, if you go out and do a traffic study on that particular sidewalk that we did, I don't think you're gonna find many people walking on it.
You know, Sycamore in particular was also part of the city's master greenway plan to go all the way around the city eventually with a walking trail, a hiking trail. Um, so, so that was a sidewalk for the street, but it was also one side, six feet wide, Tim.
Yeah.
Which is, I'm hiking a bike trail, so eventually that'll get to sixty-one. So, there, there was, it was, it was sidewalks now, but it's also a bigger purpose on that one.
Even though we don't own anything after that street hit.
Yeah, but, but again, the plan is in the board, I think Kurt very succinctly said last meeting, we need to look to the future at some point. I think in, maybe not in our lifetime, certainly not in some of you old guys' lifetime.
What are you saying?
Saying that we'll get sixty-one eventually.
I've got a question here.
All right.
All right. I'm gonna pick on the mayor here. All right, here's the mayor, he's got some property that wants to be developed, and he's got, hey, he ain't got nothing to do with engineering now.
I mean, we're probably gonna be all painted.
Well, I'm just, I'm, I'm getting, okay, then I'll use myself. I won't use the mayor, 'cause I don't want to ask him this question. All right, I've got some property I wanna develop it, all right? I got a guy, buddy of mine, I'm gonna say it's my cousin, lives in Cape Giraffe, and he's an engineer, got all the stance that you need, just like the man right there. And I have him engineered sidewalks, streets and everything, and I bring it to the city. Here's my paperwork.
That's exactly how it works.
Okay.
That's exactly, the developer gets the engineer.
Does he approve it?
Yeah.
Now, if he doesn't, what's to say he doesn't approve it?
We would ask him to look at those plans. We do the same thing on water lines, all those things can be engineered by somebody else, but the city engineer makes sure that they're done right. Am I correct?
Right. So, who pays up to that, who picks, picks that there up if it takes you a week to do that?
He's working on behalf of the city, the city picks up, so then the city picks up that.
Right. One week, or whatever, it could not take in two months.
Just like we would Ray on, on a building, he does the review of the plans, but we pay.
I'm just, just asking.
Yeah, that's a fair question.
To follow up on that, if you don't mind, my trade winds. The engineer.
Will prove that.
The, the last time or the first time?
First time, when it was put in and then presented to the city here.
Chad Hardle did that development to a, it was a state program, I don't know, it was long before I was here, I don't know if.
So, the, the state approved that engineering, Tim?
Uh, the state, I don't know.
It'd be more like, would the state approve that?
I don't know, right? That's, that's something else, too, I was thinking about that a while ago. That specific subdivision or whatever, if we don't have our inspector there seeing how this is done, yeah, it's there on paper.
That's right.
But that's probably what happened, why we're over there replacing it now.
Yeah, that's exactly.
And we could surely run into that again, because just because it's that way on the plans, you don't have a file standing there making sure it's done right. You know, if they're wanting to get it done, they're gonna get it done the way they want us to cover it up, then here in the city.
And that's why I tried to suggest last meeting, if you're ten percent and make sure it's done the specification, it's probably money ahead in the long run. 'Cause if you replace a street that McDonald's drive.
So, how can we avoid this in the future?
We do inspections now, we inspect those things.
Even though we're not the engineer, it's, uh, it's not Tim's project, it's another, so we're, we're going to enj- or inspect it ourselves.
And you guys may or may not remember, but several years ago, actually in nineteen, we cleaned it up, or twenty, November, we cleaned it up. Where we used to charge five dollars per linear foot for street inspection. And at that time, and when we redid the street policy in twenty fifteen, we said we were gonna take those things out, we just never cleaned up the order. So, that's what you adopted tonight, took out those street inspection fees, and we're paying to inspect the street, to make sure. To make sure when we accept it, we're getting a twenty-foot concrete street that's gonna last six years.
I think that's very important, that we're outside watching what's happening, can't just sign off on something.
No, and that's exactly how.
Somebody else tells you they did it right.
That's exactly how we do it now. So, number three then, everybody agrees, unless we have a complete path of right of way with a reasonable cost, reasonable investment, in this case, on Rob Street, they gave it to us. It's either all or nothing, if we don't have the right of way.
So, you're adding in here reasonable cost? The word reasonable.
Well, that, that's what was suggested, you know, I think we always do reasonable, we try to do that.
I just wanna make sure we don't buy a whole bunch of right of way again, just to put aside.
Well, we can add that in there, I mean, I don't see that as a legal breaker.
Right.
The right of way we bought on Schinler, or on Five, Sycamore. The right of way we bought on Schimmel Road, or on Five, Sycamore, that was just to get it up to, we didn't even have any right of way.
Right, we had nothing.
We had right of way on the east side, because of the developments.
You wouldn't have had to buy that much.
We bought it to, to meet the, the subdivision, or the, uh, major street plans, what we bought.
Street classification.
Street classification called for a sixty-foot right of way. That's what we bought, and if somebody wanted to develop it.
I'm just, I'm just hoping that we look at things a little different at times, because that parcel of ground that, that sidewalks beside it is not ever gonna be developed. And I think we wasted a bunch of money there, I'm just telling.
That's basically the seminary ground, Prince.
I thought at one point, I thought at one point, there was some rumors going around that, that the church was thinking about selling a few lots across there to get some money. I mean, I heard that.
I heard.
Church wasn't on it.
Well, whoever owns it was considering selling some lots.
Kind of big association.
No, it's, it's the cemetery.
Cemetery, okay.
There's a very some people there, I don't really have, I don't know.
Okay, so now, number three.
Yeah.
Let's check for heads nodding.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so one, two, and three, we've reached a consensus on one of those.
Right.
So staff believes the largest remaining issue the board must still resolve is. Street reconstruction when sidewalks do not exist, but the city has a necessary right of way. And this is the one that kinda started the whole conversation, it's also fortunate enough to end the conversation, I think. As I said in my notes below, you know, as much as we try to reach consensus and, and say kumbaya at the end. It may be time at some point for the board just to call for a vote and jump forward at all. So that's up to you guys, but right now, there does not appear to be a consensus at the board on that particular issue.
And you wanna know the reason why?
Do we have different opinions, I think?
Well, that's part of it.
Yeah.
If you go over on that street that we're talking about, it's the same type of thing I was gonna go on. The one by Bay was there, that we had.
North Parkview.
No, the, I'm talking.
Chandler.
Schimmel.
Hoover.
Oh, Hoover.
Hoover, you're talking about, yeah.
People moved into those areas, there weren't any sidewalks. And they've spent a lot of money decorating in front of their house. And there's a few houses on North Parkview Bay, whatever that is.
Yeah.
That have really spent a bunch of money putting stuff up against the curb to make the front of their house look nice. I'm not, myself, I'm not willing to say, you gotta tear that out and we're gonna put a sidewalk in. I'm just not willing to do that, because I don't think the sidewalk necessarily needs to be there to start with. So if, if you, if the rest of you wanna vote yay, or tear some people's stuff up, that's up to me, it's up to me.
Well, but. You also have to look at that, they put their improvements on the city's.
Right, that would.
Right, but there's nothing to say that down the road, things are gonna change and, you know, if it's on our property and, and we need it to put a water main in or a gas line, you know. It sucks, but hey, I mean, I, I know the ones you're talking about, and I'm sure they'll, you know, there could definitely be some pushback, but. I mean, the bottom line is that the city owns the right of way. So it, I think it would hold up in, you know, if they wanted to.
I'm not gonna say it's not gonna hold up in court either, because it will. I'm just saying it's not the right thing to do, because they've never had sidewalks.
When, when is the right time to do it then? Never?
Maybe never.
Well, what happens if, if part of our plan says we need to install sidewalks on that street? To be, to be an ADA compliant city.
I don't think it'll ever say that, it doesn't say that now.
Sometimes, sometimes it might be better to be proactive than reactive.
That particular neighborhood is, is Prince and I visited earlier, we have had people contact us about sidewalks on that particular side, it's actually been South Parkview, but there's been. Two or three people contacted us about sidewalks, so, so I think sidewalks, as we've talked about, are really a personal opinion. And at the end of the day, the board has good fortune of getting to make a collective decision for everybody, because incomplete sidewalks, we decided, we wanna do incomplete sewer lines or incomplete streets. To do it, to do it right, we need to complete it.
In my personal opinion, and I've struggled with this for many weeks. For most of us, even those of you sitting. Opposite of our little wall there, we are very fortunate to be normal people. Thank you, Larry. And, and there certainly comes a point in time, and Kurt said it well, where we as a governing group should plan for the future. Uh, Larry Reine is not gonna live forever, and his home hopefully will be occupied by a different family. Perhaps those families have, uh, family members who could be in a wheelchair, could be disabled or something of that, and. And I see putting sidewalks in, in our city, as, I've struggled with this, nothing but a benefit. To those future families that may move into our city. Whenever my daughter visits from the town she lives in, she to this day admires not only our streets. But she has numerous comments on how many sidewalks we have and what a beautiful town Perrigo is, and how proactive we've been. I don't agree with all the decisions of the past board, and I may not agree with all of the, some of the decisions we make as a council. But I firmly have gotten to believe that this is going to be a step in the right direction. And I am going to vote for the sidewalks as noted here.
One thing that, that I'm, I'm, got in my head is one of the main reasons, correct me if I'm wrong. That we're doing that street is because of the small water main, correct? I mean, we need to upsize the, the water main in that area.
That's part of it, yes.
Yeah, I mean, I would say it's a big part of it, when you, I mean, if we don't have proper fire flow, you know, we need to address that issue, that's, that's a big deal.
Sure.
So we're all ready, if we put that water main in, we don't even know where, it may, it may be going along that curb line, we're rehacking the wall, I mean, we don't know what wall we're talking about, it's rehacking the wall there. It would have to come out for that purpose, or if anything, if, if just his, his meter's up there, when you put that water main in, you're gonna have to dig up to his meter. To put a new service in, which you've got to, so we're gonna be in everybody's yard one way or the other, we're gonna be digging through the right of way. For that reason, and, and for the fact that it's cheaper to do it now, I'm, I'm gonna vote. I'm gonna agree with Larry that now is the time to do it, we got the right of way, we're putting in the street, we're digging through their yards anyway, let's get it done. That's my thinking.
Kurt? We have the right of way on all of them. There is none of this skip here, do his, do his.
This one says when we have the right of way.
Okay, if we don't, if we have the right of way, and we're tearing it up, fix it. And I mean, get the street done, everything. There's no way to hear.
You need sidewalks.
Sidewalk, street, if we're gonna tear, are we gonna tear both of them up? Are we gonna, we, we redoing the street?
And anybody's got a water main. You're gonna be digging through the water main.
We're gonna be digging that, that road up, uh, what do you call it?
Parkview.
Parkview?
Yes.
Right, okay, it's asphalt right now.
Right.
Okay, you guarantee that we got all the right of ways that we need?
The right of way over there is fifty feet wide. And if the curb's in the center of the right of way, then we have enough room, that, we haven't done all the survey and figured out, out exactly where the street is going to the right of way, but. All things considered, it should be, it should be there, if it's not, then we'll, we'll, we'll build it, I don't have to.
And all the, what I'm asking is all the residents want a sidewalk that went down through there, or it doesn't matter. If we don't have, if they don't, if we don't have the right of way, say in Joe's yard. We gonna go out and buy it, that's the only thing we can do, just fill this, right?
If we need part of that right of way to install this new water line or, or the new service line into their yard or whatever, then we should acquire that anyway. Is that right, Ken?
Yeah, we need an easement to put a utility, we would, we would require an easement, yes.
Did you say yes, Nick?
But does that not put it back up like number two then?
Yeah, that was number two.
I mean, now you're kinda getting in another gray area, I mean, I thought we had the right of way.
Well.
We think we do.
We think we do, I mean, until we get all the survey done, I mean, it depends upon where the curb is relative to the right of way, typically that's center. But there's exceptions dead to rule until we get it all figured out.
There's a lot of them.
Typical's in town, isn't there?
Yeah.
Spring streets, one of them.
Yeah, there's a lot of them out there, I'm sure, I mean, you know, we, we run into them from time to time.
In, in theory, we have a fifty-foot right of way with the street in between, we should, everything is right where it's supposed to be, we'll have room on each side. That is the belief that we have right now.
And, and if we don't for some reason, like in front of my house, the sidewalk will go right up against the curb, more than likely, is that right, Ken?
Yeah, we didn't, we don't have enough room to put, yes, we put it against the curb.
Okay.
Kurt? Dave?
I'm gonna agree with.
Prince?
I'm staying on the name.
All right. So is what we just did, Tom, a good enough of a vote, or do we need to call an official?
The motion is suck in the vote.
Motion for all of these things?
No, just in the realm of tender dispute.
Okay.
I make a motion to, uh. Do the street reconstruction when sidewalks do not exist, but the city has a necessary right of way to proceed.
What's that?
I'll say it now. Moving to the second, any further discussion? Not on seriously, aye?
Aye.
Vote?
Nay.
Who's in carries?
Gentlemen, that was a huge process, and I just thank you for letting us go through it, thank you for letting us do our work, try to give you some reports last week. Um, for doing ADA stuff today, wherever we got, we needed to get there, and I just thank you guys for letting us deal with it, that's all I got.
I'm going to want to have number seventeen, bill number sixty-one eighteen, forms number sixty-three thirty-six, accepting an easement deal, steel properties LLC, second reading, final pass.
Move for second.
Second.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor and city clerk of the city of Perrigo was ordered to attest to the city's acceptance of certain property, which said property was particularly set forth in the attached easement deed, the rest by reference.
Move for final pass.
Second.
Eric?
Aye.
Booth?
Aye.
Hudson?
Aye.
Reine?
Aye.
Schumer?
Aye.
Five ayes, no nays, one answer.